Welcome to the Bellevue City Council Meeting. Today is Tuesday, August eighteenth, two thousand twenty at six P M. If you would, let's start with the Pledge of Allegiance and then that'll be followed up with the invocation by Pastor Andrew Diorio from Midlands Baptist Church.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's pray. Father, thank you for the opportunity we have tonight to bow our heads in the come before you, acknowledging our need of you, your wisdom, your grace. Father, your providence, your hand of work. Tonight in this members, council members meeting, Father, I pray for each one, pray for our mayor, I pray for the city administration, Lord, all those who will be making decisions this evening that affect our city, the lives of each one that lives within it. Father, I pray your blessing upon them. Give them wisdom, Father, give them discernment. I pray that, Father, all decisions made this evening would be that which would be according to your will. Father, we think about those who in our city, in our state, in our nation, around this world, Father, who have been stricken with the virus that is still raging in very, many different areas, Lord. We pray for each one that has contracted the coronavirus, pray for recovery and healing, pray for those who have lost loved ones, pray for those on the front lines of this virus. We pray for their safety and their protection. We think of the first responders, policemen, firemen, others, Lord, who put their lives in danger every day. We pray for your protection upon them. We thank you for them. Thank you for our military, those who serve our country here at Offutt Air Force Base, Father. I'm just grateful, Lord, for the many blessings that you give to us. We think about the freedoms we enjoy here in this nation, we're grateful for that. Lord, we reminded of what your word tells us, that righteousness exalts a nation. So, Father, we pray tonight for righteousness. We pray for your will to be accomplished. In Jesus's name, amen.
Amen. Thank you Pastor Diorio. Susan, roll call please.
Mr. Stinson.
Here.
Mr. Cook.
Here.
Mr. Shannon.
Here.
Mr. Preister.
Here.
Mr. Burns.
Here.
And Ms. Welch.
Here.
Thank you.
All are here, thank you. This meeting will be conducted in accordance with the Nebraska Open Meetings Act. A copy of that act is located on the rear wall of the council chambers. Item five, approval of agenda consent agenda claims and advisory committee reports, five A, approval of the agenda.
I'll make a motion that we approve the agenda.
Second.
Motion by Shannon, seconded by Preister to approve the agenda consent agenda. Any com- oh, sorry, the agenda. Any comments? Please vote.
All voting yes.
Thank you. Item five B, approval of the consent agenda. Items marked with an asterisk are approved where this item is unless otherwise removed. Councilman Cook?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make a motion we approve the consent agenda.
I'll second it.
Motion by Cook, seconded by Welch. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. Item seven, special presentations. We have none this evening. Organi- item number eight, organizational matters, we have none. Item nine, approved citizen communication. We did not receive any request. Item ten, liquor licenses, we have none this evening. Item eleven, ordinances for adoption, third reading, eleven A, ordinance number four zero zero two, and ordinance to amend section twenty-nine dot five dash one through twenty-nine dot five dash two-five of the Bellevue Municipal Code pertaining to the city trees. Councilman Preister?
Mayor, I will make a motion to approve ordinance number four thousand two as it shows. Thank you.
I'll second it.
Motion by Preister, seconded by Welch. Any comments or questions? Councilman Cook? Councilman Preister, let's start with you.
Thank you, Mayor. I will move to amend ordinance four zero zero two with the amendment that was sent out by legal earlier to all the council members last week. It so states it would be number E under tree removal, and it would state trees removed from city parks and similar city-owned public grounds will have a new tree planted for each one removed. The location and details for each tree will be set by the Parks Department with the Tree Board assisting in an advisory role, with all funding grants sought prior to it being a city expense.
And I'll second that amendment.
Thank you.
Okay, we have motion by Preister, seconded by Shannon to amend, as Councilman Preister just explained. Any questions on the amendment?
Just a comment.
Councilman Cook?
I just got one question. What if it's significant to disaster? Let's say when we had the tornado in two thousand seventeen, I'm feel pretty confident saying the number of trees taken out of Two Springs by our Parks Department, we did not replace it one for one for trees. And then I also had an issue like Jewel Park, what if there was a tornado knocked down several hundred trees? How do you, how do you remedy that with saying one for one?
That's a very good question. When the trees were taken along the trail in the tornado over at Two Springs, we don't count that air, it's city property, but we are not counting that as a park for our inventory and for the way we remove and put in trees. Even though we put twenty-five new trees in that trail, that was separate. If you look at Swanson Park or some of the very large treed areas, we're not inventoring all those forested areas, so we're not counting those large areas. In the event that it hit an inner-city park and wiped it out, you would have no park without the trees. So I would assume we would want to replace them, and in those cases, there were grant funds available when the tornado came. That's what we used to plant the twenty-five.
Councilwoman Welch?
Should we maybe Paul add a sentence, something unless there's an extreme weather damage, and then Parks Department will have the authority to decide what gets replaced and what doesn't, so that we're not held bound to that?
I, I sent an email, you know, with that, with my concerns, and I guess he- here's, here's my reason. What we do today, no matter what our discussion is, it will mean nothing ten, twenty years down the road. They just look at what the ordinance says, and if it says parks and city grounds, I don't know how you exclude a Jewel Park or a Swanson Park or Two Springs Trail. It's city grounds. We own it. We maintain it. We take care of it. And that's my only thought was, I think it would only be an issue on probably a disaster, but even this, this disease that's going around on the ash trees. If it, I don't know if there's ash trees in Swanson Park or Jewel Park, but what if it knocks out, what if there is and it knocks two, three hundred trees out? And, and to me, this has not given us an escape. And, and believe me, being on this council for my eighth year, I've had many times where I talked not to Bree, but to the previous city attorney and say, you know, it says in black and white, this is what you're gonna do. So that's what we probably need to do.
So Bree, can we put an exception?
I mean, I, I, I'm just asking for some help here. If no one thinks it's a big issue, that's fine, but I, I'm telling you, ten years from now, when none of, maybe none of us are still here on this council, how do you step away from this and say, that's not really what we meant?
Right.
That's, that's what I'm asking for.
Yeah, I mean, as, as I read it and as it was presented to me to put in here, it says city parks and similar city-owned public grounds. So when I heard Councilman Preister speaking about trees and forested areas, it's still city-owned public ground. So that I, I think we would have to do a one-for-one exchange based off of the reading of this. So we either need to add something in if that's a concern, with the exception of a natural disaster or events, or not have it in there altogether and just hope that the Tree Board and the city can work together in the future at its own discretion without being bound by an ordinance to make these changes.
Well, I, I, and, and Don would be able to answer this better than me, than Mr. Preister, sorry. I would guess that as many trees as that we've had to replace in a city park or city grounds over the last, say, four years, the Tree Board is probably, you know, they weren't looking for one-for-one, but they've probably planted twenty-to-one new trees, you know? So I, number one is I, I really question if it's needed. I think the city has been very aggressive, and a lot of it comes through Mr. Preister and, and the Tree Board and, and stuff. They're always planting trees. They're getting money. They're getting grants. Every time something would happen down at Hayworth Park, there'd be ten trees knocked down. I'd drive down, there'd be thirty new trees put in.
But I'm wondering if that's because of Mr. Preister and his
Diligence.
Passion.
Right.
Diligence, because of this. And, and maybe, you know, at twenty years from now, when thirty, forty, fifty years, when none of us are even here, somebody doesn't have that passion and they eliminate the Tree Board totally. So I'm, I'm thinking that we should have something in there for the preservation, but have a caveat that says if there's a weather disaster that, you know, there's a, there's, let's use common sense, or let's have a backup plan, or something to that effect.
Yeah, so I would just suggest if we're doing that, then after the last, the, the first sentence where it says planted for each one removed, comma, with the exception of a natural disaster or other events.
Other multi-tree events?
Right. Tree events, which then would be up to the city discretion. You, you could add that in there, and that could account and give some discretion in the event that there's tornado, flooding.
Disease.
Disease.
It's a natural event then?
That would be up to you if you wanna have a natural event. The other thing to think about is, what if the city wants to go clear out thirty trees to, you know, install playground equipment, for example?
I think they should.
That's not a natural event, so then do we replace it? So do you wanna limit it to a natural?
I think the intention, if we're tearing them down to put equipment in, would be to replace, and that's kinda why it's here. But I would say disaster or natural event is fair. I mean, I-
Mr. Preister, does that satisfy?
I'm okay with that. I think that gives the city some leeway too. And I, I would just mention that there is a metro MAPPA area tree group that's currently meeting for establishing and dealing with the natural disasters like Emerald Ashpour. And we've been rapidly losing trees from storms because they're old and from disasters. And we're not replacing them, even half of what is being removed. So there's an attempt metro-wide through the State Forestry Service to make sure the future still has trees in our parks. And so this isn't to burden the city, it's to be able to provide long-term down the road that we're planting today so future generations have the trees that we currently have. And if we don't plan for it and have something there as a placeholder, as a reminder, something in code, as you just said, if there isn't somebody like me here, then what's gonna happen? We'll lose them and they're not replaced.
Bree, are you-
The purpose of it.
Bree, are you okay with Don it, or Mr. Preister adding that to his amendment, so we keep things clean?
That would be fine. We need- Mr. Preister, if you could just withdraw your original amendment, Mr. Shannon withdraw your second, and then we'll start over with the amendment.
I'll withdraw my second.
I withdraw the amendment.
Okay.
And then I would move to amend, and are you putting that language on it, or?
Do you wanna read it from my?
I can do that.
Just read the whole thing and see if you like that.
My amendment would be trees removed from city parks and similar city-owned public grounds will have a new tree planted for each one removed, with the exception of a natural disaster, disease, or large tree disaster event, which replacement will be made at the discretion of the city in consultation with the Tree Board. The location and details for each tree will be set by the Parks Department with the Tree Board assisting in an advisory role, with all funding grants sought prior to it being a city expense.
Can I suggest we substitute the word multi for the word large?
Is that okay in your amendment?
Yeah, that makes sense. Cause one large tree or multi-tree event. I think multi-tree is what we meant.
I'm okay with that.
Okay, and I will second it again.
Thank you.
Thank you for raising the issue, and thank you all for the discussion.
Okay, new amendment motion is from Preister, seconded by Shannon. So is there any further questions or comments on the amendment? Okay, please vote.
All voting yes.
Okay, now we'll go by the motion from Preister, seconded by Welch to approve ordinance number four zero zero two as amended. Questions or comments on that?
Just thank legal for all the work on this, going back and reworking it. Nice job.
All right, please vote.
All voting yes.
Thank you. Item twelve, ordinances for public hearing, second reading, twelve A is ordinance number four zero zero three.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Shannon.
I'll make a motion to table this item at the applicant's request until September fifteenth.
Second.
Motion by Shannon, seconded by Preister to table ordinance number four zero zero three until September fifteenth. Any questions or comments? Please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. Item twelve B, ordinance number four zero zero four, request to rezone lots one through three, block fifty-five, city of Bellevue from B G M O T O to R G fifty O T O, applicant, city of Bellevue, location twenty-two, twenty-one Main Street.
Mr. Mayor.
We need to have Susan read the ordinance.
Susan, Susan, would you read that ordinance?
I'm gonna have Shirley read it, cause my computer will not move forward.
Ordinance number four zero zero four, an ordinance to amend the official zoning map of the city of Bellevue, Nebraska as provided for by Article Three of ordinance number three-six-one-nine, by changing the zone classification of land located at or about two-two-two-one Main Street, more particularly described in Section One of the ordinance, and to provide an effective date.
Thank you, Shirley.
Who's going first?
I'll go first.
You go first.
Mr. Mayor, at this time, I'm going to recuse myself and step down into the audience. I am being personally sued by Mr. Shannon in federal court along with other city employees. Heather Vaic has been retained by the city to represent the city in this matter.
Mr. Mayor.
Yep, Councilman Shannon.
All right, so we've got a unique situation here, cause every one of you has a conflict with this item. Every one of you is being sued over this item. So the Board of Equalization has been sued. Each of you sit on the Board of Equalization. I am the property owner, and I'm going to recuse myself. I'll open the floor for you guys to recuse yourselves, as you're obligated to do.
Okay, I'm gonna go ahead. Up to Councilman Preister.
Mayor, given the comment that Councilman Shannon just made, I would ask our current legal counsel for a ruling on whether or not we are able to stay being parties to this in the Board of Equalization. Since we all sit on and serve on the Board of Equalization, and the Board of Equalization is being sued, I'm looking for some clarity. If we all step down, nothing can happen.
Yes, and I believe that-
There you are.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yep.
Um, we don't view it as, you know, as council for the city. I don't view that as a conflict for each individual member. Um, and I believe that, um, the recusal is not required under this incident.
Okay, and tonight is main, just the public hearing. We're not taking action tonight, so.
Correct.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Okay, I will open for public hearing on ordinance number four zero zero four. Is there anyone in the audience? And we will hold the comment to five minutes if possible, please. And is there anyone in the audience? Please come forward. Need your name and address when you come forward.
Yes, I am Tom Schumacher, representative of Main Street Properties and Pat Shannon, attorney representative. I would reiterate that this is a conflict of interest due to the fact that every member on the city council is an agent of, employed by the city and who is being sued as part of a separate lawsuit as a notice of claim. Um, a notice of contract claim was filed on Jan- or on July thirteenth of two thousand twenty, and that is a separate claim with regards to the very development agreement, which is at issue here with regards to the contractual end zoning rights with regards to Main Street properties. Um, there is also a federal lawsuit being filed uh, in, um, the United States District Court for the District of Nebraska in which, uh, the city is also being sued in that lawsuit, uh, as Pat Shannon just mentioned just a moment ago, Board of Equalization as well as all members of the city council sitting here today. So we would ask that this entire decision be tabled until such a time in which it is adjudicated on the merits in the court systems, as this is a notice of contract claim, which is not a zoning issue. This is an issue of interpretation of a contract, which is specifically for the courts to decide, not the Bellevue City Council. The city would not be prejudiced in any way if they ta- table this discussion until such a time that such adjudication will be made on the merits. There is no harm in continuing to allow Pat Shannon, uh, Main Street Properties to continue its use under the plain and express terms of the development agreement. The terms are clear. He is allowed to park his vehicles on the north side of the building. He is not violating any terms of the development agreement by doing so. That issue is going to be litigated. And so there can't be a determination by the city council here tonight, either tonight or in a couple weeks at the September first hearing to rezone said use of the property when these are contractual rights, and there has never been any kind of notice, um, of zoning violations which have been triggered under the, the development agreement. We were wondering what the violation was for. There's a three-strikes-you're-out rule arising under the development agreement. The city did not comply with the terms of the development agreement. There has not been such notices issued. The only notice that has been issued was on received June nineteenth of two thousand twenty, which required compliance within the same day instead of the ten-day cure period opportunity. But this wasn't even sent by the city. This was just a notice of violation, um, from Bellevue Code Enforcement. So for all these reasons, um, this should not be decided today until such a time there's been a fair adjudication on the merits. The taxpayers are probably much relieved in the city of Bellevue if they won't have to be paying for some judgment that has been made against them for the arbitrary decision to rezone the property when there has not been, when there has not been an actual process for setting a development plan. Um, this is arising under contract. This is not a zoning issue. Furthermore, this has not been heard by the Board of Adjustments, which was expressly the process of appealing a notice of violation. So even if this was a, a zoning issue, not a contractual issue, the Board of Adjustments has not heard this matter, and it is improper for the city council to make a decision prior to that or without having full knowledge of the facts. But regardless of the Board of Adjustments decision, city council are agents of the city being sued in this matter. So it's for all these reasons that the, it should not be rezoned. The courts should allow to decide this issue fairly, and then the city council should defer to whatever decision is reached by the state courts and the federal courts on this matter.
Okay, thank you. Turn back to our attorney, Heather, do you uh, have any different opinion?
No, I don't, well, I do have a different opinion as, as um, council does. Um, I believe that under nineteen nine oh four, where the city is following the correct process and having this public hearing today. Um, and then to the extent this raises issues about the pending litigation, I think that's properly something that is answered by me outside of this public hearing. Um, because that's getting into protected um, analysis. But I, I think that the hearing today is proper under the uh, statutory scheme. Um, and that he's raising issues that are outside, that are being addressed in litigation, and that that should be taken up outside today's hearing.
Good, thank you. Okay, the public hearing is open, um, is there anyone in the audience? Please come forward.
Let me start off by saying I'm not an attorney.
Uh. Michael, can I get you to say your name and address, please?
I'm sorry?
You're not an attorney.
Oh, my name's Michael Wells, I live at thirteen twenty-one Harrison Street, here in Bellevue. Um, my only reason for getting up here is fair play. Uh, a year or so ago, I travel up Harrison Street all the time, and there was a house that looked like it was too bad off to be a crack house. And I asked the city attorney, when was that going to be demolished, when was that gonna change? And I was told that it was in litigation and the city couldn't do anything. Now I hear that the city's in litigation, but they are going ahead with this rezoning, and it uh, because it's a contractual, that's mumbo jumbo to me. As a voter in this city, uh, I wonder why one person is not getting the same uh, preferential treatment, if that's not the right word, but uh, the opposite of it, uh, than somebody else. Uh, yeah, you finally knocked the house down, but it took what, two, three years to do that? And uh, even after it had been taken, but the reason was, it was under a, a, a lawsuit. Well, we got, from what I heard, we have two lawsuits here, not just one, but two. And uh, why are we rushing out to do this? Now, I was gonna present more stuff, but I was told that I had to keep it to this, um, to this one portion of the item. But that's, um, but I just don't think it's fair, hon- honestly, and that's from somebody who doesn't like. Uh, but I know like isn't fair, but in this particular case, you should at least hold off, I mean, what's gonna happen? The Bellevue's not gonna burn to the ground, nobody's gonna die over this, so why not? Just say, okay, let's put it off, wait till the end of these lawsuits, and then we can go ahead and do it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wells. Is there anyone else in the audience wishing to speak regarding ordinance number four zero zero four? Please come forward.
If I just might add a couple of points, um, I won't repeat all the points I said before, but Pat Shannon and Main Street Properties does not even know of the violations that were being enacted pursuant to activating this rezoning. I mean, it, Main Street Properties has used the same lots in the same spaces for eight years, and there's never been any issue. Um, it's been fully complied with under the terms of the development agreement. So, all at once, there are these, I don't know, must be fabricated, notice of viola- violations. Uh, he only received one, and that was in June of twenty nine, or twenty twenty, June nineteenth, twenty twenty. Um, so there's not, there's no basis or procedure under the contract, which specifically is being arisen under here today, that even gives rise to that. But again, petitioning to the city council is not doing me much good, because I represent the plaintiff, and you are all agents of the defendant. So, I'm not sure that today is going to make much of a difference in that respect to convince the other side that my arguments are better, but that's why it needs to be resolved in the courts. Council for Main Street Properties specifically requested the documentation showing the purported violations in which all of this rezoning has been enacted pursuant to, and there was absolutely no response after three different emails sent by Main Street Properties. Um, we requested all correspondence documentation files, electronically stored information, all alleged notices or violations that the planning director provided, and we have not received any of that. There has been no evidence of any violations whatsoever to re-trigger a zoning, a rezoning. Furthermore, at the time of the alleged violation, June nineteenth, twenty twenty, there was no evidence that Pat Shannon had violated the terms of the development agreement. Specifically, we had requested aerial photographs or documentation purporting anything to show that there was any evidence of violation, and we received no response. It is improper to go forward today when there is absolutely been no evidence to purport any violations whatsoever that trigger this under the contractual rights.
So are you saying there's no violations, or so then you're in agreement that you shouldn't be parking in those three spots?
Absolutely not. The terms of the agreement say north, the no- north of the north face of the building, which is the three spots directly in conjunction with the north face of the.
So does it say between the east and west walls, or where are you getting that from? Where, uh, north of, the north face of the building would be north of the building.
If they had intended to say north of the building, the agreement would have said north of the building. My point here today is that's for a court to decide, I mean, we're, we're, we're pursuing a contract claim.
If they intended on saying north of the north face of the building, and only in front of the building, they would have used the words between the east and es- east and west walls, I would think, I mean, that'd be descriptive, that, that wording's not in there.
The wording of north of the building generally is not in the contract.
Okay, well, that's another day to argue, I guess, but uh, but you are saying that he has put, you are agreeing that he has put those ve- trailers in those lots north of the building.
For various, for the entire eight years, there was no problem in parking in the specific spots, and I believe you have that in the materials as to the aerial diagram.
We certainly didn't, uh, the city certainly didn't fabricate, as you indicated, uh, violations. I, let me, let me turn to um, Heather. Is there more than one violation?
Yeah, there's multiple violations over a period of years.
We're being recorded, so talk into the mic and.
Yes, there are.
Okay.
There's records going back um, to two thousand thirteen of violations.
How many violations are purportedly exist?
Um, four to five violations over the past, since the development agreement um, has been in place.
Has the city responded to Main Street Properties' request for those violations as we've sent multiple emails?
There's um, ongoing litigation, so I can't comment as to decisions made during litigation on those matters.
So you agree that it would be wa- a wise idea to wait for pending litigation to resolve these matters?
No, I don't.
Well, that seems to be a double standard, you can have it both ways, that you're allowing for certain litigation to continue, but at the same time, we're deciding this here today in violation of my client's due process and constitutional rights, to assert his rights under his own agreement. So, this absolutely does not make any sense, and furthermore, there was no process followed by the city in terms of issuing the notice of violations and giving a ten day opportunity to cure. None of that process occurred whatsoever, which is purportedly the basis in which the city is now trying to rezone his property.
Yeah, I don't think we're retry- trying to rezone, or taking it back to the original zoning before the agreement was made, so, uh, Councilwoman Welch.
Um, Mr. Mayor, since I wasn't here eight years ago, can someone talk about what it was before and why this zoning was changed, and, and how we kinda got to this point?
I'm gonna have Tammy Palmer, city planner, come up.
This property was historically zoned RG fifty OTO, um, that's a residential zoning. The building when Mr. Shannon uh, purchased it or occupied it had that residential zoning. It was a legal non-conforming use at the time. Um, prior to Mr. Shannon, it had been used by Bellevue Public Schools as an office. It had typically, historically been used as an office use. So while the zoning was residential, the use of the office was grandfathered. Um, back in two thousand twelve, when Mr. Shannon desired to enter into the U-Haul business at this location, he pursued a commercial zoning so that he could do that. Under the RG fifty OTO, it wouldn't have allowed for the U-Haul business, the parking of trucks and trailers, the retail sales that go along with that particular use. At the time, um, city council, when they reviewed his request for a change of zone, you can go back and look at minutes. Um, some of the concerns were the use being detrimental to the neighborhood. Um, council at that time had concerns about all of the uses that would be allowed if the property were zoned BGM. It would not just allow for the U-Haul business, but would also allow for fifty or sixty other uses that could be concerning. The compromise made at that time was, city council agreed to change the zoning of the property to BGM under the terms of a specific contractual agreement, and that's what's being debated tonight. So he was able to have the property rezoned for the purpose of having the U-Haul business, having the purpose of parking the trucks, um, the trailers, and having the retail sales that went along with that, but under these specific terms of the contractual zoning agreement. So the property would not have all of the uses afforded to a typical BGM lot. So that's a little bit of the history as to why it was previously zoned RG fifty, and what happened back in twenty twelve when the city council rezoned it to the BGM OTO that it is now today.
You're still under five minutes, so go ahead, you're still under five minutes, so go ahead.
Okay, real quick, for the attorney here, uh, if I'm not cor- um, if I'm not wrong, Nebraska has an open records law, am I correct?
You are correct.
Then why not give them what they're asking for? I mean, you can't hide behind a lawsuit and circumvent the state law, can you?
I'm not gonna ask, answer questions in a forum about pending litigation, um, for which I'm advising the city.
Well, I'm not asking you to answer it, I'm just asking why you can't provide them with what they're, they're requesting. It, it isn't, to me, it's a violation of state law.
Sir, what they're requesting is beyond the scope of what we're here to speak about today. Um, and that's a record request um, involving the litigation of which I'm advising the city, so I will advise the city um, separately on that issue.
Okay, turn around and answer. Thank you.
Just thought I'd bring it up.
Public hearing's still open, is there anyone else wishing to speak?
What would be the harm in waiting until a fair adjudication on the merits of the contract claim?
Are you addressing to me?
Yes.
That you're asking me for my legal analysis, which I'm going to give to the city separately as my client.
But you understand that the decisions of the city council are affecting my client's rights as we discuss them today?
I've given you the answer.
Yeah, I think that decision's gonna come down from this council here, so we're gonna discuss it and we'll.
I mean, like I said before, I mean, it's a plaintiff trying to argue to the defendants in a lawsuit, so I'm not sure why we can't just all agree to let the courts decide, and then at that moment, once there's a fair adjudication on the merits, to then issue a zoning violation if that's what the courts truly decide. I mean, these are contractual rights. Nobody here, aside from uh, Bree Robbins or Ms. Viak are attorneys. Um, the city council is not attorneys, it's specifically designed for the tor- the courts to answer this question. It's gonna do more harm than good, I can submit um, uh, the opinions from a couple neighbors to Main Street Properties, really the only two neighboring properties, um, who have expressed their opinions on this issue, and that they have experienced nothing but great remarks from Pat Shannon and Main Street Properties ever since it was rezoned per the terms of the development agreement. And so, that was the whole point, when we're referring to the development agreement that you were asking about earlier, is to make it so that it was a non-conforming use, yes, but that it would be, that it would be profitable, and that it would help re- revolutionize the area. I mean, and it's pretty much done that, I mean, can I submit these to the council to review?
I don't, I don't know what you're referring, if they're already submitted in the, in what you've already presented to the council, that was all provided.
Do you have copies of the emails from the neighbors?
If it was in that packet, it's been provided to the city council already.
I don't believe those were in the email, or in the packet.
Is there any harm in giving? You can present them if you'd like.
Mayor Hyde?
Yep.
There is a letter in opposition from Raymond Pierce and an Alan Long Paul, if those are the two you're referring.
Oh, those would be, yes.
Yes, and they're displayed, they're both attached.
Okay.
And they were attached.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. They are the same ones, so. Councilman, or Councilman Stinson.
I think maybe you're misinterpreting what today is, today is just a public hearing, there's no vote
I understand.
today on whether this is gonna be rezoned or not.
I understand.
Without this, well, you were saying that we shouldn't be having this meeting, but if we don't have a public hearing today, what you have to say, none of us get to hear. So without the public hearing, it would have been.
I understand, it was, the public hearing is with the understanding that it will be voted on, on the September first hearing.
Well, but then motions can be made at that time, whether we decide to table it or not at that point. That's not gonna be done here today, though.
Correct, I'm, I, I am speaking kind of in conjunction with that.
Okay.
Ahead meeting. Are there any other questions for me?
Councilman Preister. Councilman Prester?
Thank you, Mayor. I would just add to your question about getting the information on the offenses. They too are in our packet, so you probably already have them. I don't.
No.
Three of them are in the public packet that I have.
No, we only received notice of one violation on June nineteenth of this year.
You might check the city website under the meeting today and you'll see the others listed.
Mister Prester, we have requested copies of those violations multiple times in the emails that are submitted before you. And we received no response as to any purported violations before the June nineteenth.
I I uh. I find that highly unlikely, but that's what I'll say. Um, any other questions for council? Councilman Cook?
Thank you, Mayor. I I don't know if it'd be appropriate. I would ask the attorney. Are those violations attached to our agenda? Could we bring them up? Or is that something we should not pursue?
They they are, they are available. Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Um, what I think is being said is he's saying he's did not receive it, and I think the other side of what the mayor said was I'm not sure if that's correct, but I I mean, there there's three or four violations on our agenda. That I know it's different than him receiving it in the mail, but they are attached and those are the ones that we're gonna reference to. We're at least reviewing our own mind before we make a decision on what to do. So I feel confident that there are three violations, at least three that was attached to the agenda.
Well, first of all, we did not receive any of those violations at any point in time pursuant to the contract.
And I realize, sir, sir, I realize that is probably gonna be a point that you're gonna pursue. All we can do is just, I'm just telling you, they're attached to our agenda. I don't know if you got them or not. But I want you to see that in fact, they exist and.
I see that they exist, but the point is that they weren't enacted under pursuant to the contract. See, the contract is a very specific procedure and this is for the, again, for the courts to decide because it's contractual provision.
Sure.
But specifically, under the language of the contract, it requires the city to i- issue a notice of violation.
Okay.
Not the Bellevue code enforcement. The city will issue a notice of violation to Main Street Properties.
To technicality on the contract that your challenge is in court, so.
Well, you asked about it. That's why I'm addressing.
Wanted to make a point that I believe three or four violations were in our packet that council members have had an opportunity to view. I realize it's a contention here in a lawsuit of what you received and didn't receive, but I would just make in a statement that we have violations on our paperwork that we can view to assist us in making a decision.
Well, it's actually more than that, councilman, because the actual present.
Can I'm gonna, I'm gonna cut you off there real quick, Mayor Hyde, may I?
Yep.
Okay, I think that we could hash this out all night long and I appreciate you and your time. The truth is, is this is only a public hearing and it's the second reading and we're not taking any action. I would really like to close the public hearing and move forward.
I I would just like to make one more comment personally myself and get.
Yeah.
Um. You'd mentioned that there's no parking north of the north building.
North of the north face of the building.
Could you bring that picture up? So where are you saying there's no parking on that picture? That that contract is addressing?
Sure, the the contract forbids any parking as you see. Okay, can I?
Just walk up there and point it and then come back to the podium.
So the north of the north face of the building is here. And so north of the north face of the building pertains to these three spots. And that does not include these three spots, which is just generally north of the building, north of the north side of the building.
North face.
The north face of the building is directly this perimeter right here, which applies to these three parking stalls. And that has been the understanding of the parties' interpretation of their agreement for over eight years.
Okay.
Because that's how Pat Shannon has used the parking spots for eight years. He is not violated the north of the north face of the building. So this is an issue for the courts to decide.
Sure, and I just wanna read the statement that's in the agreement. It says there's there's no parking or storage of U-Haul vans, trucks or trailers shall be permitted on the portion. And here's where I'm gonna say it's a little bit different wording than what you're saying, on the portion of the partial. So it's looking at the whole lot, on the portion of the partial north of the north face of the building. It doesn't say the three slots adjacent on the north side. So I'm not an attorney and maybe our city attorney would disagree, but can I see that picture real quick?
If I, if it says, if it says on a partial portion of a partial north of the north face of the building, this is the north. I'm drawing, I'm drawing this line across the partial. It says you cannot park on the portion of the partial north of the north face.
So it includes all of this. What I find interesting is a lot of the documentation and written stuff here, except in the lawsuits, but in the some of the emails and stuff that have been put in, everybody just refers to the north of the north face of the building. And I don't think that's an accurate description of what this is saying. It's saying on the portion of the parcel, we have to look at the whole thing north of the north face. So I'm drawing a line across there and everything north I think is in violation. Now, I have not seen pictures. I don't even know if pictures exist, but I will tell you. I think it involves more than the three parking spots and that'll be contented and contested in court. I think it means more than those three slots. I think if they only wanted those three slots, he would've said north of the building, the adjacent three po- slots adjacent to the building or some other wording like that.
I'm actually glad you mentioned that language permitted on the portion of the parcel, because those are three different parcels there. And so the portion of the parcel specifically would refer to that north face of, the north of the north face of the building.
Said, I'm not an attorney and maybe my interpretation is wrong. I'm just throwing that out there because I continue to hear north of the north part of the building, and I think that is not saying what is truly in the full statement. I'm not trying to say I'm right, you're wrong, you're wrong, I'm right. I'm just throwing that out there because I think the word parcel in there, no one has said that and that in fact is in the line of where vehicles can and cannot be parked. And I, for me, it has more of of uh it's a wider expanding than just three slots. That's my personal opinion. I'm not an attorney. And and maybe people disagree with me, but I think the intent was not to get vehicles north of that building all the way across the property. Only my interpretation.
Do you have any more comments for the council? Any more questions for?
I have a question for Tammy. Tammy, just for the record, this was brought before the planning commission, correct?
Yes.
Yes, it was.
Okay, and and the planning commission voted that this be rezoned, is that correct?
Correct.
And did the people that are presenting to us today come to the planning commission and state their same concern?
Mister Schumacher was not here, it was Mister Bruno. Um but yes, there was legal counsel here to state the concerns.
Okay, and again, the planning commission voted to have this rezoned and bring it forward to us, correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, let me get through the public hearing. Uh is there anyone else that wants to speak that has not spoke yet? You have twenty three seconds left.
Fine. The planning commission, I was here. I spoke before them and they said we're not signing off on whether this because they have, they basically said we're gonna abdicate our power to the city council.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else for the public hearing? Seeing nobody, I'll close the public hearing and uh there's no, is there any further questions from the council, comments? Alright, so the third reading for ordinance number four zero zero four will be September first, two thousand twenty six P M. Okay, please note that Attorney Bree Robbins has returned and so has Councilman Pat Shannon. We'll move on to item twelve C, ordinance number four zero zero five, annual appropriations bill. Susan, would you read that ordinance, please?
Ordinance number four zero zero five. An ordinance to adopt the budget statement to be termed the annual appropriations bill to appropriate sums for necessary expenses and liabilities to provide for an effective date.
Thank you, and we'll start off with our finance director, Rich Severson, and then I will also open up the public hearing, so uh if there's anybody else here to speak, you can follow Rich.
Rich Severson, finance director, uh coming here tonight. I didn't ever contemplate that this would be the most enjoyable item on the agenda. A ninety-five million dollar spending bill, uh but that's what we've got in front of us. Uh this is for the public hearing and I'm just gonna make a couple of comments. Uh just to to talk about some of the highlights and also the documents that I'm gonna show you are also out on the webpage. And they're also in the uh agenda packet. Uh there might be one or two other items that I added today, but the first one is, this is what we file with the state. Just to refresh your memory, this is really what you're gonna be voting on at the next council meeting. And the items up here, the property taxes, that is going to require a hearing on setting the property tax request at the next meeting also. So um these are gonna change. I just received the uh certified valuations. At at the time that this went to press, I just had the preliminary and you can see it was four billion, three hundred and ninety million and today I got the uh final certified value. And it did go down a little bit. There must have been a couple of uh successful protests. It's a four billion, three hundred seventy-nine million, eight hundred and one thousand. So um what that means practically, it's it's like a point two percent decrease. And that converts into about sixty-six thousand dollars of property taxes that I'll have to go back and find a uh find a way to to cover that, but there are also some other changes that are going on. We've been working diligently. We've had a meeting with the uh budget committee last week and I've been talking to all the department heads. And like I said the last time, this is, I think, the first time in ten years that really was able to go out and ask the departments what they needed to fulfill their mission and for the most part, we've been able to fully fund their staffing. Which uh there's only a couple of departments that that are increasing the full-time staffing. Uh but the rest of them, we're able to pretty much give the green light for this next year to fully staff up to their authorized levels. Including uh police, their staff to their uh authorized levels that was set a year ago. Um, the fire department, uh we've provided all the funding that they have requested for the next year and they're doing uh 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 an excellent job managing to those numbers. Uh as a finance director, I'd al- always like to spend less, but uh we gotta get the job done. And I think the budget committee understands it, the administration, uh the city administrator and the mayor uh understand it and I think we're actually pretty delighted that we can go forward, at least for this next year with a budget that satisfies the the requests of the people that work here. So uh that being said, there's the um the front page of of the budget and a couple of things. You you saw this page last time, nothing much has changed except for that little change in the uh valuation. Uh we're still, uh I'm gonna stand by I, f- funding sufficient to continue to build a better Bellevue. Uh we've got the money for them. Uh if everybody does the right thing at the right time, things are gonna get better. Uh these pie charts, they're out there for you to take a look at if anybody's interested in brightly colored charts with the numbers on them. Those those numbers will change before next week, but the budget committee has been invited to another meeting that we will go over something that's a final that we'll have for the next meeting that we can publish. Uh so anyway, those uh as of the earlier today, this is generally the total budget that uh you can see how much is made up of property taxes, sales taxes, occupation, uh state aid for total revenue coming in a seventy-one million dollars. Then the operational expenses, which are ongoing, those will just kinda continue to happen every year. And hopefully we can sustain this, cuz this is a good year. There's no guarantees that valuations and and everything, you know, pro- uh sales taxes will continue to be robust, but right now, we think that we can probably l- look into the future and say that the people that we have hired or will hire, eh we won't have to do an about-face in a in a year. So anyway, then there's some capital uh being funded by the operations. That means the cash generated by the operations. We're gonna pay for it. Uh then there is some capital uh spending. Most of this is the roads and uh roads and uh bridges, some of the street department stuff that we do get uh eighty percent funding from the state of Nebraska, so that's uh part of it will be funded by them. The rest in this scenario will be bonded. And uh uh that will leave us with a net cash uh of two million for the year, which we will add to our twenty-three million. And we, you know, projected, we'd have twenty-five point eight million at the end of the year. That's all the departments uh put together. Then you you if you just look at the general fund, same thing I just went through, but it's just for really the operating fund and that will have little shy of of eight million. Uh the debt service fund, we are continuing to add to some of the cash reserves there. And uh depending on what happens, we could use some of these cash reserves to pay down some of the, some of the debt and we could use some of the general fund cash reserves to pay for some of those projects during the year as we see fit to manage. It's it's a you you know, just a cash management um puzzle that we'll have to put together during the year as we go along and find out if things get more normalized. Uh we also have community betterment. One of the things that we we've uh done this year, the for this next uh year is we're funding economic development, the seven hundred and fifty thousand from the general fund, so that's coming from property, sales taxes, uh uh occupation taxes. Instead of funding it from the community betterment fund, which then by the end of next year, that that leaves the seven hundred and fifty thousand in there. That means you're gonna have about four million that will be able to be used for your discretion for the betterment of Bellevue. The projects that you will determine will be uh things that will will uh make Bellevue just a better. just a better place to live, quality of life. Economic development, still funded, but just from the general fund. Community development, that's CDBG. We get the funding from HUD directly because we're an entitlement city. Those funds come in after they're fully allocated to a project. And so it's, for the most part, that's a net zero type of fund. What we get in, we've really already spent in an approved project by you. Wastewater, gosh, that's a, you know, from where it was years ago, that is a tremendous success. We're going in the right direction. And actually, since this published, we've talked to Epiphany, who runs that department, and Solid Waste. And we upgraded some of the revenues and we got the right people in place. And actually, that net cash will go up even more than the $800,000 that we showed here. So that actually has gotten better since two weeks ago. And to the point that maybe, you see that 1.7 million of bonding, it might be to the point where we're almost, you know, $4 million, we may pay cash and not spend interest on some of those improvements. We'll always make sure that we've got enough for that emergency that's just waiting to happen out there. So anyway, and then there's some police funds. Yes, sir?
Are we in year two or three of the five-year increases on the sewer fees in Bellevue? Because we're going up 5% a year right now, but... I mean, I agree, it's getting better, but it's getting better because we're really abusing the rate increases.
We are increasing them, but there's been consultants and others that know that system. And all it takes is something to get into one of the mains, and we're talking $3 million of work. That's what I've been told. I'm not the expert, I'm not the operations expert, but they've convinced me to make sure that we build a cash reserve for that emergency, okay? But you're right, the revenues have gone up, and those are the sewer fees. However, I think that we're still doing a little better than some of the neighbors to the north. But again, I won't compare us to them. Things are good here. Any questions from the council? Before you open it up, it might be the same questions that somebody in the audience has.
Okay, so what you're showing us is 95, almost 96 million in bonded indebtedness and borrowing of almost, what, 16 point what this year? So at the end of all of that, we're at, what, 112, 114 million?
Let's see, I thought that I had the...
We'll go to the first page.
This page?
No, one more will be the first, with the cover page going to the state.
Oh, back to...
The first page.
Got it.
Okay, you're showing 94.8.
79.5 of principal. That interest number is taking all of the interest that we would pay into the future 15 years. That's the way they have this. It's not just a crude interest to this date. It is all the interest, which if we don't ever change one of the bonds and pay them at each maturity and pay each interest, that's what you would pay into the future.
That's the clarification I was going for, thank you. So we're adding the 16 million onto the 79.5 million?
Yes, yes. As I think, because at some point in time, if we have sufficient cash reserves and we're confident about our future, we could take some of those cash reserves and pay down some of that debt.
And right now, our debt service payments are around 8 million?
Yes, yes. And I know that you had concerns the last time. So I put together a little chart just to show you. Here, remember the percentages? You might not be able to see that, but that was somewhere around 29%. Actually, in this model, it became 31%. But here's where it was in 2001. And you can see, here's our trend line. So we are going in the right direction. This is next year's debt service. The reason you got that blip is that we went, and as you recall, about $38 million of refunding and refinancing of some of the annexation debt that we had. And what we did is we modeled that out, and it's going to start paying dividends right out here into the future 15 years. However, to get it there next year is somewhat of an anomaly in paying off some of the principal so that we don't get that snowball of debt effect. But you can see, I think this average was 31%.
But the budget was only 35 million back then.
But it's the same percentage of the taxes.
I realize that, and we're spending three times as much, though.
Okay, but we have three times as much money coming in. And so, but anyway, so I did want to just let you know that it is getting better, and that trend line looks good. And we have managed that debt into the future so that we have some room to continue to do some level of bonding in the future and to allow for more of the taxes to go to the general fund, streets, police, fire, and some of the other fine people, their salaries that work here.
Has our bonding company given us a limit on our total bonded indebtedness that we should not cross?
We want, one of those numbers up here is this 1.5, 1.7, 1.8. Certainly, keeping that under 2% is a goal. But when I asked our experts to, and I know it was like asking the fox how many chickens they wanted out of the hen house. But they actually talked, I believe, to some S&amp;P analysts. And what we got back was, if you can maintain a decent cash reserve, there's never been a better time. If you need to bond, put some money away and take some of that 1% money. That was, and you know, you take it with a grain of salt. But I think right now, that's probably good. In these times, I just, I can't predict what next year is going to bring. We have floods and tornadoes and COVID, and still we're in one of the best positions we've been in. So I hope it continues, but there's no guarantee. The rest of this, we'll just have lots of numbers. And if somebody wants to go out there and look at all of the departments, you can see how the mayor's doing, you know, against his budget this year and what it looks like next year. The council is 25 on the list. But anyway, lots of numbers for you to look at just to compare this year's budget to last year's. When I say last year, it's the current year that ends September 30th. So...
And we're still at 10 new firefighters being hired? Or did that number change?
Yes, we are at, I believe that's right. Wasn't that what we came up with is 10 new? Actually, I offered them a couple of more. But they, the way they manage is, they want to go forward with that model where they do have a pool of some part-time firefighters that they can pull from. And it is saving money. And we're lucky that we've gotten through that transition because considering that, you know, now it's going to be fine-tuning going into the future instead of funding it.
Mr. Mayor? Rich, first off, great job on everything that you do with regards to our finances and our city and the departments, because I know you watch it as if it was your own checkbook. And we know you're conservative. Question being, is there anything out there? Because I know that when you do Excel spreadsheets and you put things together, there's like, holy buckets, how did this happen? And there's good surprises. Is there anything out there that scares you? That, I mean, you can't predict the future, but you've been doing this long enough. You know, and I think it's kind of like, if we compare it to our neighbors up north, I think if they knew COVID was coming, they wouldn't have based their budget on some things that they just don't have money for. But anything out there that...
Two things. Those capital expenditures, they are really big. I would prefer not to, not to execute all of them however we can. And so that's what I've been asked to do, and that's what we budgeted for. And we do have the capacity, which is great, you know? With that, you know, AA+ rating, sure like to get that to AAA. You don't necessarily do it by spending lots of money.
Well, I know if it was up to you, we'd fire everybody, not spend a dime. But you know, that's one extreme, so...
Well, okay. That might be fair. Anyway, the other thing that, you know, just concerns me is, now, if we do get to full staffing, there will be a day because those bargaining contracts, they've got, that we have to negotiate. And we've got a system, CIR, and stuff that we have to follow, some rules with some comparability. And those increases, percentage-wise, are sizable. And when you get, you know, 30 million of wages and you have to increase those, that concerns me that can we sustain and keep everyone that we've hired well into the future? Because that's not fair to anyone.
Sure, well, I know.
If we just have a pot of money this year, and we spend it, and we go hire people, and then next year we go, oh, sorry, you know, it didn't work out.
Yeah, don't want to...
No good for anyone.
We don't want to affect people's lives. But I know we have a great city administrator and a great legal counsel, as well as leadership from the mayor to just keep us moving forward.
And I wouldn't put this forward if I didn't think that it's going to work into the future. Because I have some models that go out five years. Right now, so far, so good.
Councilman Price?
Thank you, Mayor. And I too thank you, Rich. I've worked with you through the Budget Task Force and have gotten to see some of these things. Prior years, we met multiple times because each meeting, we had to find someplace to cut. This time, we didn't meet multiple times because we were blessed. And part of it is due to the annexation and the foresight of the mayor and running on that in his campaign. So everybody knew it was going to happen. So we brought in a good chunk of money from the annexations, which blessed us. But the rest of the economy has surprised me. And the sales tax and everything else has continued to come in.
Yes, it has.
Despite that, I think we've been pretty frugal, and we've watched. But we did, just as you said, we have funded to the level that we can build a better Bellevue. And that included a promise years ago, pushed by the legislature, to fully fund a fire department, a full-time paid firefighting department. And that means people are impacted on their insurance rates at a lower rate. And so some of that money, they're going to get back. But we now, after roughly 12 years from hiring a chief, we will be at a fully funded fire department. Now, it keeps growing, I know, and the city grows. But at this point, we've achieved a pretty impressive milestone, just with that, I believe.
I need to speak for the chief, and I don't think he'd ever say that we're fully funded at this point. But the fire suppression, that mission is funded. Bellevue, the residents can sleep at night. They've got a very fine department there.
And I would agree. And I would say the same about the police department, fine police department.
Absolutely.
And they ask for 100 sworn officers, and that's been funded. So in terms of our first responders and the equipment and the person power, we've done that in this budget, which I feel good about. I think a few other things of note was brought up earlier, and that's the sewers. We've got millions of dollars in back old sewers that need to be replaced. And we do need to start working on that. We've got one lift station. We've got about $2 million in this budget to begin some engineering and to begin that process. We have an excellent supervisor in Epiphany Ramos, who's been managing that well. Our increases have only been based on Omaha's increases. And when Omaha raises their sewer rates, they pass it on because all of our fees go to pay them to treat our water. So we have not raised to the percentage that they have, nor as frequently as they have. So the ones that we have done have been lower than Omaha, and they're all going to make sure all that crap is taken away from us safely and sanitarily. So I think that's an important component of this. Willow Springs, we've been trying to get a connector from 15th Street around to 25th Street for years. We are now doing the engineering in here, which is the first step to be able to complete that and to have some bottleneck removal down there. I think that's a key and an important component of this budget. I think the economic development that was approved by the voters is in here, as you mentioned too. And something that I'd rather we not have to pay, but every year, we have to do an audit. That audit doesn't bring a whole lot of value into the city, but it gives assurance to the public that every penny that we say we're spending is spent appropriately, correctly, and accurately. And so in that sense, it has value. But it doesn't plant trees, it doesn't do some of the things that I would like. That too is in here. And I think the bottom line is the very first thing you pointed out. There is no increase in the mill levy, we're raising no taxes, and we're funding virtually all of the essential services we need to fund at a time when many cities are not able to even do that. So kudos to good management, the refinancing. Kudos to the administration and the council, but also to all of the department heads. They have had to put these budgets together, and they too have had to look carefully. And when they're staring across the table at you, they're under some pressure to make sure it's only the essentials and that it's penny for penny practically. So, thank you.
I would echo that, that I may not be the most enjoyable person to work with when it comes to the budget, when they're asking for some funding. And I'm scrutinizing what they do, how they do it, but just trying to get to the right answer. But I got to say that...
I'll second that.
Those department heads, I actually really enjoyed working with them, especially this year, being able to say okay to some of that. I mean, the fire chief, the police chief, the acting Public Works Director, they've all been great. I mean, including, you know, Tammy in planning and all those other people. It's really worked out this year.
Did anybody take your temperature before you came in? Yeah, no, I still have a public hearing open. So is there anybody else here wishing to speak regarding the budget? Please come forward.
Seeing nobody, I will close the public hearing and now I'll open it up if there's anybody wants any, has any comments or questions. I would just uh end by saying thank you very much, Rich, and the budget committee. Um all done a great job, but Rich is uh it, to me, it makes it easier with Rich at the helm, so. Um but I know what it's like to balance your checkbook and try to keep a budget and that's uh, you know, it's not easy.
We'll see. With the final that you'll be able to vote on and I think be proud of.
Good, thank you. Close the public hearing and the third reading will be September first, twenty twenty at six P M on the budget. So I am at twelve C one, resolution number two zero two zero dash three five. A resolution to set the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one property tax request. No action is gonna be required, so we will move to item thirteen ordinances for introduction. First reading, we have none. Item fourteen, public hearing on matters other than ordinances, fourteen A, request to approve the fiscal year twenty twenty-one through twenty twenty-six capital improvement plan and request to approve the amended fiscal year two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty, public works capital improvement plan. So I will open that up for public hearing. Is there anyone here wishing to speak on the capital improvements? Seeing nobody, I'll close the public hearing. And if uh somebody wants to make a motion, Councilman Preister.
Thank you, Mayor. I will make a motion that we approve the twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-six capital improvement plan.
I'll second that.
Motion by Preister, seconded by the quicker one, Burns. Oh, no microphone. Any questions on the capital improvement?
Just a comment. That future councils, uh while we improve the C I P, can at any time due to fiscal changes, not fund these projects as we go through the years. So we approve them now. We say this is our plan going forward. This is not set in stone, though. They come back to the council and at that point, we can say, okay, wait a minute. COVID's taking our money away or whatever that change is, and we can stop these. So this is not tacit approval that we are spending this money. This is saying this is our plan right now.
Or the next council has different ideas. So. Anybody else? Councilman Preister.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I I I concur with Councilman Shannon, and that's in effect what we're doing in part of this. Because we're making some adjustments in the current ending year and adding a few things as we said we were going to with the annexations. So we said at that time, the C I P would need to be amended. Rather than bringing it back separately, it's combined. So I think it was efficiency by the administration and by the finance department and uh planning. We've combined it, we save time, put it all together, and for the last couple of months, there are some things in here. Because of budgeting, we have the flexibility. This gives us a good game plan down the road for five, six years. And we adjust as we need to, so.
Anybody else? Motion by Preister, seconded by Burns to approve the C I P plan. Please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. Item fifteen resolutions, fifteen A, resolution number two zero two zero dash thirty-six. Approve and authorize mayor to sign updated master fee schedule.
Councilman Preister.
Thank you, Mayor. My screen is a little delayed and slow today too, but this item doesn't have any information in it because it's still being worked on. So because of that, I'm gonna make the motion to lay it over to our next council meeting.
Here, here, I'll second that. I'd like to know what we're changing.
Motion by Preister, seconded by Shannon to uh table resolution number twenty twenty dash thirty-six until the September one council meeting at six P M. Questions or comments? Please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. Item fifteen B, request approval of resolution two zero two zero dash three seven and the acquisition services agreement by the city council and authorize the mayor to sign resolution two zero two zero dash thirty-seven and this agreement between the city of Bellevue and mid Midwest Rightaway Services, Inc., not to exceed two hundred and twenty-seven thousand, four hundred and seventy-five dollars for the Thirty-Sixth Street, Sheridan de Platteview, urban widening phase two, MAPPA three seven, three, three, one, control number two, 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 eight, eight, project.
Mayor, I'll make a motion that we approve resolution twenty twenty dash thirty-six.
Second.
Motion by Shannon, seconded by Burns. Uh any questions or comments? Please vote.
All voting yes.
Thank you. Takes us to item seventeen, administration reports. Anybody have any comments?
Councilman Preister.
Thank you, Mayor. I I just want to make one comment and that's today is August eighteenth. And this is the one hundredth anniversary of the women, the ratification of the Nineteenth Amendment to the U S Constitution that gave, we say, gave women the rights. Women worked hard. They shed blood. It was multi-generations to be able to get the right just one hundred years ago, long after our country was founded. So I want to salute all of my sisters out there and celebrate and recognize this is an anniversary that I think is good to celebrate and good to mention. There was an article in Today's World Herald for those people who still, like me, like to look at the printed paper. And there's also been other exposes and information, and it's certainly deserving of that print. And I am so grateful and finally got wise and voted for it.
Councilwoman wealth.
I'll just second that.
All right. Any other comments? Questions? Okay, we'll put those in the record. There's no closed session, so who wants to leave?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion by Shannon, seconded by Preister to adjourn. Please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you.